Let me call the meeting of December 14th to order. And please rise and help me sloop the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, I think we're going to move item 11A.
Mayor, if I could call the roll call quickly?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones is absent. And Mayor Engler?
Here.
I was worried if I'd have a perfect meeting and that got out of the way really fast. As I was saying, I think we're going to move item 11A, which is the community grants up to right after the consent calendar. But first, we have a couple of really great presentations to make. And let me move over to the other podium and we'll do some nice presentations. It's great to see so many people in the audience and to have so many of our younger members of our community here is very exciting for us. So I'll be right over there. So we're going to have a great presentation, actually two presentations, for our youth of our community who have really shown some excellence. Our first presentation, and I'd like to welcome the players and coaches of the Thousand Oaks Girls Softball Association, 10U All-Star Team to the podium, if you can come on down. The city is very proud of your accomplishments and on behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to present you with some certificates tonight. I'd like to ask your coach, Heather Spoor, to say a few words about your team and also introduce each one of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, everyone, for having us. This is our 10U All-Star Team from Thousand Oaks Girls Softball. They won our local district tournament, they came in fourth in the state tournament, and then they won the national championship for their age division. They worked very hard, probably six days a week when it comes down to practices and games, it was pretty much their whole summer, but they did it with a smile. And the amount of hard work and effort they put in was just truly mind-blowing to me, not only as a coach, but as a parent as well. I was trying to figure out what our record was overall, I think, starting with maybe May, when this team officially came together. The girls only lost four games and won probably 50, and outscored our opponents about 300-something to about 12. So they were pretty dominant, they were pretty impressive, and all these girls are going to go on to going to our local high schools here in Thousand Oaks and the Canale Valley Unified School District. So I would like to introduce all of these girls individually. So, all right. All right, so first up, we've got Addie Mackens. Next up, Ally Hermanson. Annabelle Spoor. She's not here, but definitely deserves to be honored, Brooklyn McCombs. June Neal. Kira Luterer. Kelsey Luterer. Leah Husband. Leah Kittzman. Michaela Ramos. Shelby Kaiser. And last but certainly not least, Sophia Gressel. And I'd just like to also thank the other coaches on the staff. We had Maria Husband, Kirk Buchanan, and Andrea Neal.
Thank you so much, and another round of applause for our team here. We'll take a second, we'll take a quick picture in front of the dais and... Okay, and our next presentation tonight is for our Westlake High School's girls tennis team. So if you can come on down, that'd be great. How's it going?
I don't know if they're in a particular order.
I think they're in this order. Okay, thank you all for coming down. And I just want to say that I'm very impressed with this group of athletes here. On November 12th, the Warriors won their first CIF Southern Section Open Division Championship in 30 years. So you guys are the first in 30 years, which is great, but that's not your only accomplishment. The team is ranked number one in the United States. And on top of that, every one of these players has a 4.0-plus grade point average. Congratulations to all of you on your impressive successes this year, and thank you for representing our city with such excellence. Coach Yasgore, I would like you to come over and explain a little bit about your team and some of the accomplishments over the year, and if you can help me with the proclamations.
First of all, we had, oh, I'm sorry. Due to COVID, everything was a little tricky. We ended up, last season, condensing the boys and girls into one season, and that got to be kind of tough to do, but our girls just kind of rose up and in the spring won their first state regional championship. So we had boys and girls going out at the same time, the girls excelled and won, and then we started, took about a month off, started right away in the summer, got ready, and then this season won the CIF Open Title, the next week won the state regional championship again to go back-to-back. And as I told the girls, my parents probably aged me about 10 years, but we were able to do it, which is quite exciting, just an unbelievable group of kids. We have freshmen that made the team, we have seniors, and I'll introduce one or two that are going to be playing at the next level, which is quite exciting, not that I had a lot to do with that, but they work hard, they're unbelievably great students, many play instruments, so they're just fantastically well-rounded kids. And so I don't forget, I want to thank Coach Diane, my assistant, who helped me every step of the way, so. My other assistant, Coach Joe, who's been with me since I started this five years ago, wasn't able to make it tonight, but between Coach Diane and Coach Joe, I couldn't do what I do without their help. Sure, first and foremost, I hope I get this all right, is junior Abby Flamer. I think Abby's probably about a 5.0, give or take GPA, something like that. Sophomore, one of my super sophomores, was hurt most of the season, but came back just in time to help us make our run, is Allison Leon. Another senior, I don't know where she is, somewhere in the line here, who was a big part and a lot of fun, just a great person to have on the team and to be around, is Angela Ling. Another one of our very talented sophomores, we wouldn't do what we did without her help and her determination, and just a pleasure to have on the team, Ariana Lu. Another freshman, whose limit, I think, is limitless, her potential is going to be fantastic, very excited to see how she progresses, Carolyn Horton. One of my super freshmen, part of a sister team, really contributed a lot during the season for us, and in fact, her mom played for us for Westlake a few years ago, just a couple of years ago. Danica, Warrior, Danica Backus. And obviously, this is in no particular order, but one of our true incredible athletes, I can't say enough about Emma, other than the fact that she's already committed to play tennis next year at Stanford. Concert pianist, and about a 4-point-something GPA. Another super senior who's been with me four years, Mai Ying-Tahur Yang, I like to think, just a really special, special individual and a fantastic tennis player, another probably closest straight A student, where's Essence Wang? The other half of the sister act, of mom who played, a senior who really stepped up this year, and we couldn't have done what we did without Karina's effort, for sure, Karina Backus. Another junior, another huge part of what we did, seems like everybody was a big part of what we did, very excited to see how Kalen finishes off her senior next year for us, I'm really excited. Way to go. Another wonderful freshman, whose potential is also through the roof, super happy, I got a call from their family the week before school started, I'm like, sure, let's see what you look like, so I'm like, okay, you're on the team, you're great, this is going to be wonderful, Liv Nardialis. And the other half of the second sister team, who, again, is just going to be a fantastic player, will no doubt follow in her sister's footsteps, Megan Sun. And probably the most entertaining kid we had on our team, and just a lot of fun to be with, also another huge part of our championship drive, had a huge win for us when the pressure was on, that's Sophia Tyran. Did I get everybody? Oh. Last but not least, one of my other seniors, I've had the pleasure of working with four years, just a fantastic, fantastic kid. Rachel, I can tell everybody now, will be our Ventura County Player of the Year for her effort. We couldn't do what we do without Rachel. How come you're not on here? Oh, God, I went right past you, oh my God, I say the best for last. I couldn't do what we do, hopefully everybody follows us on our Instagram, and we pass the torch each year, and I had one of the seniors helping me in the beginning, and just got too busy with school and all her demands, and we passed it on to Anisa, who's also a great player and just a wonderful, wonderfully funny, great kid to have around, Anisa Vadia. And that's our team. These are the Warriors, so give them a big hand, they're unbelievable.
Would you guys like a picture? Let's go in front here.
Oh, beautiful, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please announce public comments?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Four individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Okay, our first speaker up tonight is Sheri Ferber. I believe she's online. Waiting for Sheri Ferber.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ferber. I'm a resident of Liberty Canyon. I'm a Save LA Cougars Advisory Board member. I'm someone who has studied native wildlife for more than a decade. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking about the North Point Coyote Policy. I've called and emailed community property management four times, offering the help of multiple agencies ready to give wildlife human conflict mitigation strategies free of charge. Not one response to myself or others who have tried. We are building a wildlife crossing because we know the critical elements for a robust ecosystem necessary for a healthy human environment, yet we are allowing native wildlife to be exterminated. The irony of this and these actions is that artificially impacting the coyote population will most likely result in females having larger litters and more frequently. Coyotes are native wildlife and an essential part of the trophic cascade, reducing numbers of mice, rats, gophers, and rabbits. Coexistence is truly so simple to achieve, and agencies are at the ready to educate North Point on how to achieve it. What a disrespectful disregard of the spiritual values of the nearby Chumash Center and the Native American respect for wildlife. I have to wonder as well if there might be a connection found here to our recently poisoned bobcats, three of which did not survive. Someone is lying, either the company trapping or the board to the homeowners, because in their letter to homeowners, they claim the coyotes are being relocated. Not true. How can this be anything other than animal cruelty that must be stopped? And this is taking place within your city, so I am asking the council to look further into this and to do everything within their power to prevent this from continuing to go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up, we have Randy Filish. Also, I believe she's online.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council members and mayor. My name is Randy Filish, and I am a Calabasas resident and humane policy volunteer for Humane Society, United States. I'm speaking tonight because many of us volunteers have attempted to reach out to North Point HOA and their property management company, and have had absolutely no response to our offers of presentations and help with their coyote situation. Trapping and killing of coyotes by North Point is an ill-conceived approach that is ecologically, ethically, and economically indefensible. This HOA community was built into open space, which has been home to many wildlife habitats. Scientific studies show that trapping will ultimately prove ineffective and will exacerbate the situation, as coyote populations will quickly rebound, often within weeks or months. Instead, North Point HOA should choose a more humane, effective, and ecologically sound approach, one that emphasizes public safety, education, and a reduction of coyote wildlife attractants. Unexploited coyote populations naturally will limit their own population density by establishing and defending non-overlapping territories and suppressing breeding among subordinate members of their extended family group. This will prevent the overpopulation in any given area, and then it ensures sustainable prey resources for the group. Efforts to reduce their numbers by trapping have largely been unsuccessful because coyotes exhibit strong compensatory population responses to lethal control. While lethal control may result in short-term reductions in a number of coyotes, it actually will temporarily increase the prey availability, resulting in an increased pup survival. This will be an increase in regional coyote populations right after following the trapping. Coyotes, as you know, play a vital role in maintaining healthy and viable ecosystems. In addition, these urban coyotes directly regulate the abundance of small rodents, including rats and gophers. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife has offered a Wildlife Watch program that empowers residents to address and resolve human wildlife conflicts. Communities would be provided the support and training needed to develop integrated wildlife management. This would be a solution and an excellent alternative to trapping. I'm reaching out to you to see if you can also help with this situation. Thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jody Rojani.
Good evening, City Council members. Am I being heard? Can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am, you're coming in clear.
Thank you. This is Jody Rojani of Agora Hills, and thank you for giving me this time to speak. I would like to speak out about the North Point HOA community trapping and killing of coyotes. I'm speaking tonight for the creatures who cannot speak out. I am speaking out for those who have no voice and are enduring immense suffering and cruelty that is needless, immoral, and is harmful to our ecosystem. The natural habitat of our precious wildlife has been destroyed, encroached, and invaded for the development of living spaces for us humans. What right do we have to eliminate the living space and the very lives of these animals? We share this land with our fellow creatures. It is our duty, it is our moral responsibility, to protect the lives and to protect the space for these animals to live in. We must be the moral stewards to speak up for the protection of our wildlife who have no voice to speak. We must start by stopping the trapping and killing of coyotes in the North Point community. Please help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, also remote, is Danielle Borja.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and City Council. My name is Danielle Borja. I'm the president/CEO of the Greater Canyon Valley Chamber and also a Thousand Oaks resident. Just a couple of updates from your chamber this evening. One, we're less than two weeks away from Christmas, and just want to remind everyone to continue to shop local and support your local businesses, especially our small businesses. We have so many great ones. Newbury Candy for all of your candy needs, Sunlived, Cheech Winery, for all you bicycle lovers. We have Hub Bike Shop. I just had lunch at Made in Italy today. They have a great little market section of, you know, handmade pastas and oils and all of our great restaurants. So just want to encourage everyone to keep our businesses top of mind. Secondly, Keneho Cash is still running, so if you have guests that are coming into the area over this holiday season or headed into the new year, if they stay for two nights or more at one of our local hotels in Thousand Oaks, they have the ability to register their stay and get $100 in Keneho cash that they can use on anything that they would like locally once they check in. And finally, our last event of the year is going to be our mixer at Palm Gardens tomorrow night, so I would encourage everyone to join us there at 5:30 to wrap up the year, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Borja. Very appropriate timing on the shop local. I appreciate that. Okay, next up, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hardy, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor Engler. So as you know, we do have a COSCA Administrator, Brian Stark, who's responsible for oversight of our open space management and conservation. I am going to ask that he follow up with each of the speakers to further discuss the matter, and we will also follow up with the City Council. COSCA is exploring ways to provide additional education, and again, we'll follow up with the speakers as well as the City Council.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, I think we have the consent calendar, so do any of my members have, want to pull something? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I would like to pull items O and P.
O and P. Anybody else have something to pull? Do I have a motion to carry the balance?
Move the balance.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Jones absent.
Very good. Councilmember Bill De La Penya, O and P.
Thank you. Yes, O and P are the votes for the lake-specific plan as well as the development agreement. And for housekeeping purposes, since I voted against both of these, I'd like to, the record to reflect that. So I will not be voting in favor of O and P, because, for housekeeping reasons, yeah.
Okay, well, very good. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
If I could just confirm if Councilmember Bill De La Penya is making the motion to approve?
Mm-mm, I didn't make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Move O and P.
Thank you. Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
No.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Jones, I'm sorry, 3-1 with Councilmember Jones absent and Councilmember Bill De La Penya dissenting. Thank you. And I do have three ordinance titles to read into the record. The first one is an ordinance approving a development agreement, 1872 Newbury Road, applicant Daylight TO LLC. An ordinance amending specific plan number 11, 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and its associated general plan amendment, and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan, applicant TO Lakes LLC, ordinance number 1691 NS. And an ordinance approving development agreement, 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, applicant TO Lakes LLC, ordinance number 1692 NS.
Well, very good. Well, let's go on to our item 11A, which is the Community Sports Grants and Social Services Grant Recommendations. I'll call up Ann Lafianza to give us a discussion on it. And also available is Sarah Miles and Melissa Martado for questions.
Here forever. So it's really nice to see everybody here. And what a timely thing to be announcing the community sports grant after those great teams were just honored here. So I wanted to say good evening to all of you, Mayor Engler and council members. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the Community Funding Review Committee's recommendation for the city's fiscal year 2021-22 Community Sports Grant, CSG, and the One-Time Social Services Grant, SSG. The city's community sports grant program funding is included in the adopted fiscal year 2021-22 budget. The grant provides $100,000 of funding to support sports and recreation programs of local nonprofit, community, and school groups. In order to qualify, applicants must be 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organizations located in or primarily serving the Thousand Oaks community. Qualifying programs must provide a benefit for the community they serve and a wide cross-section of Thousand Oaks residents. The application period was open from September 20th to October 25th. The application was available on the city's website. Email notifications were sent to applicants from the previous grant cycles, and when this grant was formally known as Sports Facility Endowment Fund. A press release was published, an ad was run in the Acorn. CVUSD did an email to all booster clubs, and the city utilized social media to notify the community of the grant opportunity. City staff held an application workshop on September 20th via Zoom for all booster clubs, athletic directors, and nonprofit organizations interested in applying for the grant. The workshop was recorded and remains available on the dedicated Grant Opportunities webpage on the city website. The city received 12 qualified applications with grant requests totaling $84,520.99. CFRC members independently evaluated the applications using predetermined scoring criteria based on requirements in the grant application. On November 15th, 2021, the CFRC met to discuss the collated scores of the applications and unanimously confirmed the recommendation to City Council. The CFRC is recommending grant funding for 12 organizations for a total of $84,520.99. These are 12 organizations being recommended for funding. The wide-represented events meet the criteria for benefiting the community and a wide cross-section of residents. These include sports facility upgrades and equipment purchases. The CFRC recommends that City Council award the fiscal year 2021-22 Community Sports Grants as presented by the committee with a total award of $84,520.99. Now on to the Social Services Grant. So we had a one-time Social Service Grant Program, SSG. It was approved by City Council on August 31st, 2021, allocating $665,000. In order to qualify, applicants must be 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organizations located in the city of Thousand Oaks and providing basic social services. The application period was open from September 25th to November 1st, and the application was available on the city's website. Email notifications were sent to applicants from the previous Social Services Grant cycles. A press release was published, an ad was run in the Acorn, and the city utilized social media to notify the community of the grant opportunity. The city received 27 applications. During staff's initial review, five applications were denied. Four were found non-compliant with program requirements as they were either located outside of the incorporated city and did not provide direct services. One application was not eligible for further funding. This was senior concerns. As a reminder, on August 31st, City Council approved $35,000 to complete needed HVAC and refinery repairs, and directed that this grant amount be considered against any further funding for senior concerns in this program. CFRC members independently evaluated the applications using predetermined scoring criteria based on requirements in the grant application. On November 15th, 2021, the CFRC met to discuss the collated scores of the applications. The committee unanimously determined one further application ineligible because the organization did not meet the requirement of providing a basic or essential social service, and recommends that City Council fund 21 applications to City Council for a total of $664,999.86. These are the 21 organizations being recommended for funding. The represented organizations meet the grant criteria of being located within the city of Thousand Oaks and providing a basic social service. The Community Funding Review Committee recommends that City Council award the fiscal year 2021-22 one-time social service grants as presented by the committee with a total award of $664,999.86. And this concludes my presentation this evening. An assistant to the city manager, Melissa Martado, and community services analyst, Sarah Miles, and I are all available for your questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very, very nice to see so much of our money going to such worthy organizations, and thank you for that hard work in trying to decipher and make that award. So thank you for that. My council colleagues, Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Thank you. I know you want to call me mayor. It will take a while to get used to that. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is a Christmas present for all.
This is a Christmas present for all of these organizations that are so worthwhile and so worthy. And I just wanted to point out that there is a reason these are excellent organizations. They have fantastic volunteers. And several of the volunteers, actually many, were highlighted in the Community Commitment Award that we had going on all year long. And it is what really is a testament to the character of our community in that we volunteer so much of our time for and to needy causes. And I'm so glad that the city was able to provide this grant, especially in this more difficult time. So I know it wasn't easy to go through all of the applications, but thank you very much to you and the group as a whole.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember McNamy?
I thank you for being here and what a wonderful presentation. As Councilmember Claudia Bill De La Penya had commented, that these type of programs are so vital in our community. And I've served on committees such as yours, and it takes many, many hours to go through and decipher which ones get what. Please extend my most sincere thank you to everyone on those committees for the hard work they put into this. I know it was not easy. I've been there and done that. And please extend my thanks and appreciation for them doing that.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a couple of public speakers. So if I can get Brian McQueeney, if he's on the call. Looks like he's remote, so Brian McQueeney is up.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for holding this really amazing grant-giving ceremony that you're doing tonight. I think it's a testament to the leadership in the community, really going back a generation or more. I will tell you firsthand, having spent many, many years in the nonprofit sector, that this type of leadership is not common and it's not to be taken for granted. And I know all the hard work that goes in on the part of the committees, on the part of city staff, and in particular, the driving direction from the City Council is just enormously important to all of us. I just want to remind you that last May this year, we, Right On, actually celebrated twenty years of service in the community, service to the disabled community in partnership with the Cano Recreation and Park District. As you all know, in the last couple of years, we've taken on a new role and new projects that are even more complicated and have much more potential for giving benefit to the community. Some of the grants you're approving tonight for Right On will benefit our disabled riding program, and some of them will begin to help us with the rebuilding process out at Rancho Pettero. So we're grateful for both of those. On any given day, we are serving hundreds of people now, hundreds of individuals with disabilities, hundreds of people who are able-bodied equestrians. And this is something that is remarkable. And we have many volunteers that come and help us as well. We have partnerships with Cal Lutheran right now, with Safe Passage, with the Girl Scouts, with the C R P D program staff. And as Mayor Angler just saw in his capacity with his Kiwanis hat on last week out at our Trail Fest, where we brought over a hundred riders with disabilities out to enjoy these amazing animals in our amazing open space. That is really eye-opening to see not only the number of people who want to participate, but the universe of people who are willing to help them. So I want to thank you again. Right On considers itself to be a steward of a public trust, and we're very grateful for your support and your leadership in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Valerie Fitz. Valerie is in the, in the, in the house, coming down? Hello, Valerie.
Hi, good evening. I'm Valerie Fitch from Thousand Oaks. I'm the chairperson of the Cano Valley Village. And I'm here on behalf of all the older adults in the Cano Valley Village. I'd like to thank you for your consideration for the support grant that's on tonight's agenda. Inspired by the feasibility study conducted by the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging, Cano Valley Village was founded in two thousand and fifteen by a small group of friends and neighbors. The founders appreciated the desire of nearly all the residents to continue living in their homes as they age. And they recognized the challenges in doing so. As they became aware of the Village-to-Village Movement, which offered a model for meeting this challenge through a network of independent villages springing up throughout the United States, the founders created Cano Valley Village. The village is a membership organization and it connects older adults to the community living lives of purpose and growth. The village was formed by members of our community based on the needs of our community, providing a full suite of events and services through volunteers. Our village recognizes the power of personal connection and helping members remain active and engaged. We look to the future together with confidence and enthusiasm. Our goals are to be active in our community and to stay safely, independent, living with confidence in our homes. To carry out our mission, Cano Valley Village provides a wide variety of services that meet the needs and the expectations of our members. We maintain a virtual office through scheduled volunteer call managers who assist members with requests five days a week. As a community-based organization, we rely on generous volunteers who fulfill most all of our requests. The village is comprised of members, volunteers, and then often volunteers become members and members become volunteers, but that makes up our community. And to be a volunteer with us, everybody has to have a background check from an outside organization. C V V members can request services, like rides to a store and get assistance. They can get a ride to the doctor's office and have someone there to take notes if that's what the member would like. And we help with minor home repairs, technology, which is a big one, with cell phones and getting everybody on Zoom this past couple of years was a challenge, but...
And Valerie, we're coming up on our time?
Okay, all right. Okay. Anyway, we have a lot of events for our members, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's our last public speaker. So I'll open it back up to our council for comments, discussion. Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the committee for doing such a good job and sharing the wealth among so many different organizations that you've got a real cross-section here of the community, and that's going to enable these organizations to continue to serve our residents. I appreciate that, Ann. Really do.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And with that, I'll move that we approve the Community Sports Grant and Social Services Grant Recommendations from the Community Funding Review Committee.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, thank you.
Just to make sure that Mr. Adam's motion is for the staff recommendation one through six.
That it would be.
Thank you.
Well, very good. Just a quick comment from my position. We are very fortunate to be able to provide this extra money that is available now, not only just for the sports groups, but also for the social services group. I'm very happy to be part of this organization that was able to get the cash and bring it in for you. Looking at the array of people we're able to help this year, from football to golf to therapeutic horsemanship, and then our social services from Adelante Comunidad to Safe Passage, Mana, and people that have been in town for a long time like Mana, and then very new organizations such as the Cano Hill Community Outreach, which provides diapers for those in need. So I'm really happy to be able to be part of this and to help these organizations better serve our community. So with that, I would call for a vote.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
And Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And that motion carries four zero with Councilmember Jones, or Mayor Protem Jones absent.
Thank you all so very much for your support and have a very blessed holiday season.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Onto our next public hearing, which is on the water and wastewater rates and fee adjustments. I believe we have Carrie Mattson going to do the presentation, as well as Cliff Finley will be there, and Nader Hadari.
And Mayor Golden opened the hearing. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item Eight A, Water and Wastewater Rates and Fee Adjustments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has requested to speak, and pursuant to council standard, speakers will have five minutes.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Angler and City Council Members. This discussion is our utility rate-setting public hearing to establish water and wastewater rates for the next two years. Just to reiterate, joining me on the dais this evening is Cliff Finley, Public Works Director, and Nader Hadari, Deputy Public Works Director. Also joining us is Sanjay Ghar from Rothelis Financial Consultants. Here's a summary of the proposed utility rates for the next two years. There is a one percent increase each year proposed for our water service rates, and adding to that amount is a two and a half percent for year one and three percent for year two pass-through rate for our imported water costs. For wastewater, there is a three percent proposed increase for the next two fiscal years. The Utility Financial Plans and Water Cost of Service Study, which provided the framework for these proposed utility rates, were approved by City Council on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. Tonight, we have our public hearing for the next two years of rates, which would go into effect for water, March first, two thousand and twenty-two, and January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and for wastewater, July first, two thousand and twenty-two, and July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Moving on to more details regarding water rates. Water rates are composed of two different components. There is a base rate that is charged regardless of water use and a variable rate that depends on the quantity used. The base rate is determined by the size of the meter. A three-quarter inch or five-eight-by-three-quarter-inch meter size is predominant for our single-family residential customers, and their base rate would increase by forty-one cents per month in two thousand and twenty-two, which is a one-point-six percent increase. This chart shows the overall tiered water rates for a single-family residential customer would be affected. The amounts you see here include the pass-through rate increases from Cayega's Municipal Water District, which is our imported water supplier. To summarize the water rate changes, this chart illustrates how low, moderate, and high-usage bills will be financially impacted. An average residential customer, shown in the middle of the graph, using sixteen units of water per month with a three-quarter inch or five-eight-by-three-quarter-inch meter would be minimally impacted at a cost of a dollar forty-nine per month. Residents who conserve water and use less than ten units per month will see even smaller increases. The city's average monthly bill would still compare favorably with our other waters, water providers in the area. For an average residential customer, there would be no change to our rank. It is important to note that agencies with lower water costs reflect differences in local water supplies, such as groundwater or reclaimed water, which is less expensive than imported water. This year's rate adjustment process also includes adjustments to development connection fees, which are new connections to the water system. Per Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, water connection fees are currently adjusted annually by council action to reflect changes in construction costs. Adjustments are based on Engineering News Record's Construction Cost Index for Los Angeles, which over this past year experienced an eight percent increase, equating to the six-hundred-and-fifty-five-dollar adjustment you see here. Going forward, a biennial versus annual increase or decrease based on two years prior Engineering News Record Construction Cost Indices for Los Angeles will save staff time in preparing reports and adjusting fees. This improved consistency will also assist developers and new residential home builders to better calculate their anticipated building costs. Moving on to wastewater. The three percent proposed rate adjustment translates to a ninety-cent increase per month for our residential customers, beginning in July of two thousand and twenty-two, and ninety-three cents per month in July of two thousand and twenty-three. In addition to the base rate, for those customers the city serves in the unincorporated areas, Ventura County requires the city pay property tax for the wastewater lines that extends through county land. The two thousand and twenty-two property tax payment is just under sixteen thousand dollars. This cost is spread evenly amongst the three thousand and twenty-six out-of-city customers served and is increasing from thirty-one cents to forty-four cents per month. This chart shows the current and two thousand and twenty-two proposed increase. At thirty dollars and eighty-five cents per month, the city will still have the second-lowest wastewater rate in the county. Additionally, wastewater connection fees are also currently adjusted annually to reflect changes in construction costs. This year, an eight percent increase, which is seven-hundred-and-ten dollars for new residential connection, is proposed. Connection fees mitigate the financial impact of development on our existing customers, and these one-time fees apply only to new construction. Similar to water, going forward, connection fees would be adjusted by annually versus annually, also based on the two years of prior Engineering News Record Construction Cost Indices for Los Angeles. These proposed rate adjustments were prepared under careful consideration by Rothelis Financial Consultants. Their duty was to develop rates which are fair, equitable, financially responsible, and directly attributable to the actual cost of providing those services. I also wanted to take the opportunity to provide a brief update of our utilities assistance program. Just over four years ago, City Council approved the development of a residential assistance program for low-income water and wastewater customers. Staff performed outreach via brochures, billing inserts, and information provided on the city website. We are currently at thirty-six percent capacity for wastewater and sixty-two percent capacity for the water program. The program has been well-received, and we have room for more customers who meet the eligibility criteria for this assistance. No changes to the program are being recommended at this time. In summary, our recommendations are to conduct tonight's public hearings, receive the report from City Clerk on Proposition Two Eighteen protests, and if no majority protest is received, to adopt the water and wastewater fee ordinances. And staff is available should you have any questions.
Council colleagues, any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Thank you. Yes, we do have a few comments from the public about Item Eight A. Two or three opposed, three opposed. I wondered if staff had a chance to look at these comments, and if so, what would be your response?
Good evening, councilmember. This is Nader Hadari. Yes, there was two supplemental packet items submitted on Item Eight A. And the first one was addressed during the presentation here, which is that the unincorporated residents pay a small additional surcharge to cover the direct cost the city incurs in providing the wastewater service to the unincorporated area. The other comment that we received on Item Eight A had indicated that the increases may be a result of expansion of the system. However, that's not correct. The increases are instead necessary to ensure ongoing operations and maintenance of the wastewater system to keep that essential infrastructure. wastewater system to keep that essential infrastructure operating at a high level. So they're, they're not being done to fund expansion of the, of the wastewater system.
And the other concern was that they were under the impression that they were already prepaying their fees via the, the property tax bill that comes, and I think we have two comments regarding that. Could you clarify that?
Sure. This is part of the transition that we made of moving the bills to the county property tax. So residents do pay their wastewater through their two property tax payments per year. So it's, we have realigned it with the fiscal year.
So to make it clear to the residents who are saying that they are already prepaying, it sounded as though they're paying more for it in their, in their emails.
No, they're still paying the same amount. So this new amount of rate increase will not go into effect until July of 2022. So the first time that increase they will see on their December 2022 property tax bill.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify since that was mentioned in the emails. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any questions for our staff? Very good. Let's go to our public speakers then. We'll open for public testimony. And additionally, if the public has any remaining written protests, please bring them to the clerk. Okay, our, we have one public speaker on this right now, and it's Wendy Zimmerman. And I believe Wendy is online.
Yes, I'm here. You got me?
I got you, Wendy. We can hear you fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote to you extensively regarding the rate charges. I live in, I'm Wendy Zimmerman. I live in Newbury Park. I am one of the residents who is being demanded to pay the surcharge. I did some research, and my research says that your methodology and implementation of the surcharge is not in keeping with the California Constitution. Proposition 2018, 218, says that a city, their engineering report, which you have Rich Rothelis, who does reports for lots of folks, has to add up all of the costs and look at all the rate classes, and all of the parcels belonging to a particular category. For example, I live in a single-family residence, have to be charged the same amount, not more, not less. It is based on all of the actual costs, and that's how the rate goes. So some houses are, cost you more to run the sewer lines over to Hill Canyon than others. It doesn't matter whether they are in the city limits or out of it. The wastewater is a district. The district works differently than what the city has. City does not have the power to charge some single-family homeowners more, some owners less, than others. The state says it must be equitable, and each house pays its proportionate share. Case law says that you cannot cherry pick whether it goes by property, property, or neighborhood to neighborhood. You have to take all of the single-family houses, for example, in the district, and divide them into the total that it costs you to serve those homes. So we all need to pay the same amount for our wastewater. We all flush. We don't have anything different or fancy. We don't have a choice of to whom our wastewater goes for processing. This is a necessity, and the California Constitution lays this out specifically in, in 13D. So it's all there for you. I sent you a written comment, which Ms. De La Peña has referred to about this, that explains it, including in the words of your own consultants, how it works. So everybody has to pay the same amount. Therefore, the increases for the folks who happen to live in the county should be less than those who live in the city, but whatever the rate is, it is for all of us. So you need to redo the math, look at it. I'm not sure why this has been allowed to happen for years, but it is not in keeping with what the California Constitution lays out in this important subject of wastewater. I know it's not glamorous, but the wastewater district is specifically spelled out in the California Constitution that came through from Proposition 218 back in about 1996. So we need to pay attention to this. Those differences do add up for those of us who have been paying the surcharges, and it's all a cost. We don't necessarily all have the exact same cost to run our, our lines and our wastewater to the Hill Canyon Plant, but we all pay a share. So I'm sure that those of us who have a surcharge for what they consider paying the tax that Mr. Hadari has mentioned, that that's why you claim that you can't have a surcharge. But we're paying, we're subsidizing people who have distance issues or difficult terrain that their sewer lines go through. It all goes into the pot, and we all have to pay the exact same thing. You can't split it. You have one rate tier for single-family houses. You have another rate tier for your commercial folks, or your apartment folks, or whatever, however many you have to do it, but each of those pays our fair share, no more, no less. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. I think we can ask our staff for a response to the items you brought up, the information you brought up, so I will turn it over to staff for any response.
Sure. We are going to have our consultant, Sanjay Ghar, expand a little bit more on the Proposition 218 requirements.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and public. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So I just want to make sure, what we're talking about is the additional service charge for outside-city customers. This is a property tax that the county of Ventura assesses the city for its sewer lines. So it's a third-party cost. It's not a cost that the city borths. It's actually, and it's on specifically a cost that outside customers, units, that they assess that. If we, the city did not provide outside service to these customers, then this cost wouldn't occur. So from a Prop 218 perspective, the proportionality of assessing this charge to those who render that cost makes sense. I'll pause here to see if staff or if anyone else wants to comment on my remarks.
If I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So in listening to the public comment, I just want to make four points. One is that the process that we followed complies with Proposition 218. Our methods are legally defensible as far as how we process this, and as staff has already said, both in the previous report and from the consultant's comments right now. Staff has addressed her comments, and again, looking at her email previously sent, and the ballots, this is for Prop 218, when you send out the ballots, it's for the property owners. So every property owner who receives a ballot, and these ballots were timely sent out after that initial meeting in October, the ballots are then sent out, and every property owner has a time to submit those, either opposing or approving, and that's what's before you tonight. And so the city clerk will announce at some point in time what the ballots were. If there were enough for a majority to either, to oppose it, you would have to have the majority of the property owners who were submitted ballots, which I believe is in the thousands, to oppose it for this to not happen tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Any other further comments from staff? Let me just see if I can put this into my own words. This is a county charge that we're passing through to the, the residents in the county areas? Is that pretty much what it is?
That's correct. So if we weren't servicing these out-of-city residents, then we wouldn't have the charge. So part of the Proposition 218 is that you want to equitably divide the cost to the appropriate people who are actually receiving the service, which is why we divide that $16,000 property tax payment to those 3,000 customers who receive the services that are in unincorporated areas.
And that, that charge is not applied to other citizens in, in the city of Thousand Oaks?
That's correct, because otherwise, those residents would be subsidizing the people in the unincorporated areas. So you want to make sure in this process that you're aligning the appropriate costs with the residents and the service that they're receiving.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you. So just to clarify, that surcharge that is being charged by the county but run through the city, how does that show up on the bill? Does it show up on the bill as a separate charge by the county, or is it all bundled together?
That is an excellent question. I have not seen the property tax bill itself. Ms. Cliff?
Bundle. Yes, that, that would be a bundle, and at this point, it's going to show up as a single dollar amount for wastewater services from the city of Thousand Oaks on the, on the tax bill. So just like some of the other fees that show up on that bill, whether it be for storm drain, et cetera.
Would it be helpful to have an parenthesis printed on, on the bill that 1% or whatever percentage it is, is, is a county mandated fee, so that it is clear to the residents?
So you know, you remember, this is going out with the property tax bill. It's definitely not a city-generated bill, so we don't really have any opportunity to revise the way the county bills your property taxes.
So we would have to speak to the assessor?
We, we would. However, I don't know that they would, they would change that for us. It's also, though, it's, it's very clear, it's actually outlined very specifically in, in the financial plan of exactly where it comes from. The calculations are there. It's really the basis of the fee. It's like everything else that we have in those fees. We don't, we don't, when you get their cost, we don't break out the different, the fixed cost versus the, the amount of water used, et cetera. So it's really, it's the, I'm sorry, that's water, but it's the same idea for, for wastewater. It's just a single dollar amount.
I had not heard before that there is a surcharge that is required by the county, so that is news to me tonight, and I was just curious to see how it could be clarified to the residents in the unincorporated areas.
The surcharge is also included in the Proposition 218 notices as well.
Councilmember Adam?
Oh, thank you. I'm just, since we have the lower, this is wastewater we're talking about, right? And since we have the second-lowest wastewater rate in the county, what is the surcharge anyway?
The surcharge is currently 31 cents and will now be 44 cents per month. That's roughly 1% to add on to the, to the bill.
So you're talking another four bucks a year, something like that?
Yes.
Okay. So the commentator should really be addressing her remarks to the county versus us. Okay. Thanks.
Very good. Any other questions for my colleagues? Okay. Prior to closing the, the hearing, I want to take one last call for written protests before the clerk does the tabulations on it. So if there's no further written protests, I'll close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please provide the results of her tabulations?
The results are as follows. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed water rate increase was 17,115. A total of two valid protests were received prior to tonight's public hearing. Based on the results, there were insufficient protests received for a majority protest. 8,558 protests were required. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed wastewater rate increase was 38,308. A total of five valid protests were received prior to tonight's public hearing. Based on the results, there were insufficient protests received for a majority protest. 19,154 protests were required.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any further discussion or, or questions from my colleagues? Very good. I'll take a motion. Thank you.
Yes, if, if I may, I'll move 8A, the water and wastewater rate and fee adjustments. One and two.
Very good. Any other comments, then we'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Protem Jones absent, and I have two ordinance titles, titles to read into the record. And the first one is an ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees of the city water division, uncodified, and an ordinance adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of the city wastewater division, uncodified.
Very good. We have a, another hearing. We got 8B, which is Underground Utility District Number 13, Jan's Road between Moore Park and Windsor Drive. Mr. Graham Watts is going to present with, again, Nader Hadari is available for questions.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Underground Utility District Number 13, Jan's Road between Moore Park Road and Windsor Drive. And Mayor, at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Mr. Graham, Mr. Watts?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Angler and members of the City Council. Tonight's public hearing is to consider the formation of an underground utility district on Jan's Road, so that Southern California Edison can design and complete a project to underground utilities throughout the area. City Council has long supported several successful undergrounding projects, and in 1993, a citywide undergrounding master plan was approved that identified priority areas within the city to be undergrounded. Here is a partial list of the nine total areas on primary arterial roadways that the Public Works Department has completed undergrounding over the past 20 years. In June of this year, the California Public Utilities Commission revised Rule 20 undergrounding program that will basically wind down the program by the end of this year. The action also requires the cities to identify, to identify undergrounding projects that could be funded with the remaining Southern California Edison credits, or risk losing those funding credits. Staff has identified Jan's Road between Moore Park Road and Windsor as the best remaining candidate with above-ground utilities to underground, using the 1.9 million in Southern California Edison credit funding available to Thousand Oaks. The Jan's Road area is the highest remaining underground project remaining in the council-approved master undergrounding priority list. Additional funds are also budgeted in the city's undergrounding fund to cover any additional telephone and cable undergrounding costs that might be necessary. It's also important to note that this project will be completed at no cost to property owners. The proposed utility underground district and project area is on Jan's Road between Moore Park Road and Windsor Drive, and will result in the removal of up to 12 power and telephone poles, including many that are right in the middle of the sidewalk on Jan's Road. The completion of this project will result in a more resilient electrical and communications network, improved pedestrian and bike access, and better overall neighborhood aesthetics. The proposed formation of the undergrounding utility district number 13 this evening is a key step towards utilizing the available 1.9 million in Southern California Edison funding that is to be applied, applied to the Jan's Road project area. Approximately 40 property owners are within the project area, and all of them have been notified about tonight's public hearing. Staff has also created a project website that will be updated as the project proceeds. To date, staff has received no inquiries, and all the property owners within that area will not pay any assessments or fees related to this project. Here is the anticipated schedule for the next steps of the project. Design, public outreach, and Southern California Edison review is anticipated to begin next year, with a final design in 2023, and then construction beginning by 2024. These are the recommendations, as outlined in the staff report, and this concludes staff's report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Council, do we have any questions?
I'll give them one.
Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Finley, this is a use-it-or-lose-it deal, right? I mean, we have 2 million I mean, we have $2 million of these so-called work credits that we need to use by January of next year, correct?
That is correct.
So, yeah. Well, I'm sure the neighbors are going to miss these Godzilla telephone poles in the middle of their sidewalks. I tell you, I don't think I've ever seen that before. You have to walk around the poles as you maneuver down the sidewalk with this bird nest of wires above you. So, this, I mean, to me, this is like a no-brainer to, you know, replace, underground these things. Reminds me of what we did on the Boulevard with all those telephone poles. Remember those ones that blew down 10 or 15 years ago? Underground, and the Boulevard looks beautiful now. So, I think this is really a good use of the money.
Agreed.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Thank you. You said, use it or lose it. I'll say, take it or leave it, right? Why can we not start sooner? Why is it taking so long until 2024?
Yeah, having completed a few of these projects over the past 10 years, it's just a matter of, when you're discussing the substantial nature of this type of activity and the design coordination that has to take place between all of the different utility companies on those poles, and our efforts to make sure that everything's buttoned up design-wise before we start opening up the street so that the construction phase can go smoothly, that that's the realistic schedule. Of course, we'll try to push as best we can to accelerate.
Now, is it conflicting with the resurfacing of Jan's Road?
No.
So, when will Jan's Road be resurfaced, or slurried, or whatever we're calling it?
Yeah, we would schedule it to take place relatively soon after this project's completed.
After the project, not before. Okay. Well, hopefully, sooner than later, I would say.
The woodpeckers may miss them.
Councilmember McNamie.
Not our wildlife.
And you mentioned that this was going to be sunsetting with the opportunities presented by the power companies. Is that correct?
Yes, the identification of the project has to take place by December 31st, and then, but yes, the overall program, which the Rule 28 program is unique, and it's a ratepayer-funded, small amount every month was collecting. And the Public Utility Commission, I guess, has determined that the program, either the money was being spread around and not being utilized statewide, or there can be other purposes for it. So, we continue to be big advocates of undergrounding and look for other ways to keep doing it. But this particular one program will not continue in the future, it looks like, in its current form.
You kind of dovetailed into my question additional is, if we're trying to underground the power lines, which I fully support, would like to do that, what's the strategy at this point on getting funding to move forward with such an activity?
Yeah, we have our own city undergrounding account funds, which have some, you know, limited funds in them, that, some of which will be utilized on this project, as Graham mentioned, to underground the telephone and cable lines and so forth. But that fund occasionally receives a boost when there's an undergrounding, maybe somebody instead of undergrounding one pole on their frontage cashes out and pays into this fund. That's where a lot of the funds came from. But that's not going to amount to substantial work in the future, you know, this doesn't add up to that level. So, we're hoping to find alternative sources. We're hoping that other sources may happen. We have noticed that PG&E in the Bay Area has announced that they're going to be undergrounding, I think, like 2,000 miles of lines. So, and that's something we're hoping that, yeah, Southern California Edison may follow suit on. But, yeah.
Very good. Mr. Graham, thank you for a wonderful presentation.
I just have a quick question or two. I believe that the, this will have some disruption to the neighbors there. You've mentioned 40 or so homes. Can you explain how we're going to alert them and how we're going to handle that, give them that notice?
Yeah, certainly. That goes part and parcel with the, basically, the schedule of the project, having to do a lot of that coordination and outreach. And it is going to be disruptive to several of them who currently have a drop service, so that the overhead wire comes down off the pole and goes into their panel, you know, through the air, and that's going to be converted to an underground service. And we went through the same scenario when we undergrounded Moore Park Road back around 2005. So, the advantage for the property owners, they're going to get a brand-new electrical panel and new underground service, and won't have the wire to look at anymore. But certainly, doing the work has some disruption, so it's going to involve individual outreach with each effective property owner well in advance.
And how is this going to dovetail into NEADA? Because I know those poles, I've walked that street before. Those poles are right smack dab, and it's a fairly narrow sidewalk. Is that part of the reason we want to do this?
Absolutely. Yep. That's going to open up that street. And in addition, Jan's Road does not have dedicated bike lanes. However, once these poles are removed from the sidewalk, that will provide another opportunity for the bicyclists to be off of the roadway surface and still, you know, travel on Jan's Road by using the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot to ask one thing, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. How many poles are there, are we talking about here?
There's 10 to 12, depending on if you count the ones that are around the corner and so forth. So, on Jan's, there's 10, but we ultimately are hoping to, based on the final design, you know, wrap around the corner once or twice and get up to 12.
Good. And that's a stretch of how long is that?
It's roughly 1,500 lineal feet, I believe, a quarter mile, a little bit longer than a quarter mile.
Good. Yeah. Well, it's good to underground these things, too, for safety purposes as well, right? Okay, great, guys. Thanks.
Very good. I don't think we have any public speakers on this. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? So, any further questions for our staff? Comments or a motion?
Need to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's close the public hearing, and then we'll go to discussion and motion.
Well, I feel comfortable making a motion to approve Recommendation 1 and 2.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Pro Tem Jones absent.
Very good. We're on to Item 10, Department Reports, and we're talking about automatic license plate reader equipment purchase. Madam Clerk? Very good. Let me call down our police chief, Jeremy Paris, to make our presentation. There's also going to be, Carrie Mattson is available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to discuss automatic license plate readers. Automatic license plate readers consist of cameras and the software associated with that. And the cameras capture license plates, and then the software interprets those plates and can store that data and also compare that data to a preset database that includes, contains license plates for stolen vehicles. License plates may be associated with missing persons, persons on probation or parole, people that have warrants, and also, we can enter vehicles in there that are vehicles of interest to us. It really works in two ways. There's real-time alerts where patrol vehicles have this equipment on their vehicle, and as they drive by a stolen vehicle, it may alert to them that that vehicle nearby is stolen. And then the other one is it captures that data, retains that data, and we use it for investigative purposes later on. For, and I'll talk about an example of both of those a little bit later on. For the history of how LPRs have come to be with the Sheriff's Office and the City of Thousand Oaks, we first, the Sheriff's Office first purchased LPR equipment in 2017, and all those devices were patrol-mounted, that initial purchase. And later on, we made other purchases. The City of Thousand Oaks made purchases, included a trailer mount system, and I'll talk about those in a minute, and a fixed-location system as well. And we've had a whole bunch of cases that have been solved using this. One I want to talk about in particular is in 2020. A 16-year-old girl was on a path hiking trail in Oak Park and was assaulted, and a man attempted to kidnap her. She was able to break free from him. He fled. We had a vehicle description, a patrol vehicle with an LPR on it had driven through that area 15 or 20 minutes before and captured that license plate. And that, our crime analysis people who analyzed the data, they're actually able to use the software. They're able to take a location in a period of time and look for any reads, and that's how they found the license plate. They were able to have that suspect in custody later that night for that using some other LPR reads that were historical, right? So, I, so we have a real time where they captured it, and we have historical data, and then combined with some DNA evidence, they tied him to some other sexual assaults that occurred here in the City of Thousand Oaks, as well as in Ventura, going all the way back to 2017. So, it was a pretty significant case. We also have, on a regular basis, we find stolen vehicles that are involved with these LPR cameras. We also, our recent North Ranch burglaries, the South American theft groups have been captured. We know to tie them to cases, and that was historical data that was used. We found a rental car they'd been using, and then able to look through the historical data and find a time they had driven by and tie them to another theft here in Thousand Oaks. We have three types of systems. We have a patrol car mounted system that consists of four cameras on the patrol car. The great thing about those is when they do drive by, say, a vehicle that's associated with a missing person, that alarm will go off for the deputy right there, and they can act on that right away. We have message board systems. These systems are portable. They're tied to a message board. You see that, like, say, would say, "Don't drink and drive" on it. Those we can, are portable. We can put around high-crime areas or, you know, crime trends, address those. We use those during the North Ranch residential burglaries we've had. We also use those in commercial areas. We've had the recent smash-and-grab thefts. They're a great tool. They do, are battery-operated. They last about three days, and they have to then be charged for a day, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then also, we have fixed cameras. So, those, just what they sound, they're at a location. We have two in the City of Thousand Oaks right now. We have one at Westlake Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and one at Moore Park Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I want to talk a little about data protection. It's a really important topic. We have some really stringent data protection rules set in place. And I have a policy statement here, we have, but really to talk about that a little bit more than what's just here. We, every user of our LPR data has to go through a training before they're allowed access to that. The only people that are allowed access to that are people that have been through the training, people that are doing audits of those using the data, and then are any technical people that would be working on the computer system from that end. Each user has their own unique login and password, and when they do log in, the system keeps track of who's logging in, when they're logging in, of what data they're looking at. And it, they have to type in, when they do look at the data, they have to type in a case number associated with that data so that it's like on a need-to-know basis. Therefore, when we go back to audits, we can ask people, hey, you looked up plate so-and-so. What was your reason? And we can tie that back to a specific case where they do that. Some other things that are really important to understand. I talked about the real-time use of the license plate reader. If a deputy gets an alert that a vehicle, say, a stolen vehicle just drove by, he has to visually confirm that plate, and then they run it through dispatch separate from the system. So, it's something that's really important to understand, because license plate readers do sometimes give false reads. They misinterpret, you know, a C and a D, and they give a false read. And so, part of our policy is deputies shall visually confirm that license plate, and then they do a second check of that outside that LPR system to confirm that the data is correct. So, we don't act on something with a false read on the license plate reader. Also, in addition to that, if there is a false, say, they get a false alert, and then they visually confirm it and recognize there's a mistake, there's a process we have where they report that mistake to our crime analysis people, and on the back end, they'll try to correct the data. We, right now, are keeping our data for five years, and I want to talk about that a little bit right now. The legislature last year, California Legislature, had a bill that they were considering that was going to limit that to 24 hours. So, data storage will only be for 24 hours. That bill didn't go through, and we're glad, because we talked about the real-time data wouldn't be affected by that, but the investigative use would get severely affected by only being able to keep that data for 24 hours. But the legislature does have this on their mind, and I predict that sometime in the future that there will be some restrictions on how long we keep this data. I'm going to talk about a company called Flax, Flock Axon. They're actually getting started on a study right now. They're providing free cameras to major counties throughout the United States. They're doing a study to look at really what is the correct amount of time, or most, really, the correct amount of time to keep the data, where it solves the most cases yet still ensures privacy. So, there's more to come on this data storage, on how long it lasts, and we're keeping an eye on that. So, right now, our policy is five years, but we know there's legislation coming that's going to affect us on that sometime in the future. We have come up with a four-part plan to increase our LPR presence in the city. Just to go over right now what we have, we have seven patrol cars right now. About half of our patrol cars have these systems on them. We have the two message board trailer I discussed earlier, and we have two fixed cameras. We'd like to add three more patrol cars with the LPR systems. We'd like to add two additional message board trailers, and we'd like to purchase four fixed cameras. Now, we're going to, the two fixed that we have now, we're going to upgrade to a newer model. The ones we have now cover about eight feet width of lane. The new ones cover 18 feet width of lane, and there has been some, they're getting older, and there has been some problems with them. So, we'd like to upgrade those two, and then we're going to add two additional fixed cameras. So, we'll end up with four, but it'll just be two in addition to what we already have. And then, a big part of this plan is we want to work with local businesses. We already had a technology workshop with several businesses. Councilmember McNamie was present for that and participated in that. We discussed with many of the local businesses about purchasing their own equipment. We think it's a great tool. I've spoken with Caruso Properties. They're, they've committed to purchasing eight cameras for their properties. The Mace Riches is looking at. The Thousand Oaks Business Association has committed to providing $25,000 to the city to assist with this project. So, there's a lot of value in with the cities, or with the businesses. Another thing we're doing with the businesses, as I mentioned, the trailers can only deploy for about three days before they have to be charged, and they're coming back to the station to do that. And what happens, unfortunately, is lots of times our cadets are busy, and they don't go right back out again. So, we're looking at putting charging pads or charging stations for those out at the businesses in the community. So, hopefully, the trailers never come back to the station. So, maybe they're in the North Ranch area, and they need to get, they need to be recharged, and maybe we can move them down to somewhere on Tua Boulevard, so they're charged, still collecting data, and move them back again, rather than having them sitting in the parking lot, the PD, not collecting data. So, that's where we're trying to make some progress with the stuff we do have to make it more effective. And the other thing is, we are participating, the counties participate in this Flock camera trial. We have 25 cameras coming to the county. We have, 10 of those will be deployed in the City of Thousand Oaks. That will be of no cost. They are, it's a one-year program, so at the end of the year, if we want to keep them, we can. If we do, if we don't, they'll just go back to the company. That's a different company than we're using for our regular, all our other equipment goes through a company called Vigilant Solutions. The great thing about Vigilant Solutions is our partner agencies surrounding us also use that. So, we do share data with other government agencies. We do not share data with commercial entities, however, but we do share with other agencies. So, when we have LPR cameras on the Vigilant system and we're using that system, and for instance, we have a smash-and-grab group, or the South American theft groups is a great example, who are staying down Los Angeles, we have access to that data because we're part of that system. And that's the conclusion. We do have, the other thing I wanted to mention is, we do have a policy on LPR cameras that spells out some of the data safeguards I was speaking about. And those, that policy can be found on our website, VenturaSheriff.org, under the Transparency tab. There's a policy section where you can look in that. It's Policy Section 429.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions and inquiries from my council colleagues? I think we'll start with Councilmember McNamee this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I have to say, this is a pleasure developing this expansion of our public safety here in the city of Thousand Oaks. And thank you very much for the opportunity and your willingness to make this happen. I appreciate it very, very much. Couple of questions I want to clarify. When I was going through the police academy with Los Angeles Police Department, they talk about right-to-know, need-to-know. Could you elaborate a little bit more? You touched on it as to how this data is kept confidential even within the police department regarding right-to-know and need-to-know.
Yeah, so going back to our policy, every access point of this system is controlled by a unique login by the person. Using that, you only get a login if you're trained. That, when you do log in, it tracks where you logged in from, what time you logged in and out, what data you looked at. And when you do run, so to, to look at the data, you, you type, say, you type in a license plate or you type in an area search, you have to put a case number involved in that to show, to, so we can audit that information later on. So we don't, for instance, you can't, you cannot use this for, and it spells out in our policy what you can and can't use it for. You can't use it for your own personal, your own personal, say, say you sold a car and somebody didn't, you know, make all the payments on it, you want to go look for it yourself. If you were to, if you were to use that system, that'd be a violation of our policy and, and you'd, you'd get in serious trouble for that.
Let's say, for example, a criminal who wants, has once and warrants on them, they are driving a vehicle into California and they come to Thousand Oaks. And they're in a national system where that license plate is identified as being associated with someone with once and warrants. Would the system notify the Ventura County Sheriff's Department and thus our Thousand Oaks PD that a vehicle with once and warrants associated with it is here in the city and we could act on it?
Yeah, and I, I'd like to expand on that a little bit. So if it drove by a patrol car, a patrol tri-car drove by it, it would actually alert the deputy right there with the patrol car. If it drove by one of our trailers or it drove by our fixed camera location, that read then goes down to our dispatch. We have a, dispatch has an advanced real-time information center. We have a dispatcher that's got some investigative training there and has access to the system. That alert goes there and then they can dispatch a unit to go investigate that vehicle.
I've met with some of the mall and shopping center owners to interest them in also adding license plate readers to the ingress and egress of their facilities to create a welcoming shopping experience for their guests who come to those shopping malls and centers. What has the response been from the ones that you've communicated with here in the city to help enhance public safety?
The ones I've spoken with are all in, in favor of it.
So they're very supportive?
Yep.
I, I remember reading not too long ago in the local newspaper of a stolen vehicle from Oxnard. Driver goes over to Westlake High School, picks up two females. And as they're driving down the street, the patrol unit picks up that this is a stolen vehicle from Oxnard. Pursuit happens, vehicle stops, two young ladies get out, pursuit continues. That was, again, attributed to license plate reader technology to identify a stolen vehicle?
Yeah, and I'll tell you, back when I was in patrol, we had one hand on the keyboard trying to type it in as we drove. It wasn't as, because we, we would do it, but we had to manually do it, but it wasn't as safe as having it, cameras do it on its own.
They don't create sheriff's deputies like that anymore, do they?
No.
The, the questions I have, again, I'll just summarize at the end, Mayor, as, as to the genesis of this and how we got here, but thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Bill DePena?
Thank you. I was wondering, again, I think the, the primary concern that I'm reading from public comments here that we received and, and in the supplemental pocket is that the company Vigilant Solutions had a couple of problems on the other coast. And there was an article in the New York Times about people getting wrongfully arrested.
Yeah, so I, I had the opportunity to read that article. It's an article, actually, it's a New York Times opinion piece, but talks about an incident here in California near Oakland. In that incident, according to the, the opinion piece, a rental car was stopped by the police. It went by a fixed LPR location. Their dispatch, dispatch officers, they stopped the car. They, they did what we do on all stolen cars is they take them out at gunpoint, it's called a high-risk stop. After that, they looked at the, the paperwork on the rental car company and saw that everything was legitimate. At the end of the article, however, they did mention that the car had actually been entered in the system as a stolen vehicle. And it sounds like the rental car company failed to have that removed afterwards. So not really an LPR problem with that. That does happen. That's happened to us before where rental car companies, they, they don't get returned, they report them stolen, they eventually do get returned, they neglect to have them removed from the system and they do get stopped. But that's not, that's not a LPR problem. That's a, a problem with the rental car company not removing that stolen vehicle. Because I did read that article.
Good, thank you. And then it also says here that the city or the sheriff's department needs to ensure that there are controls in place to address privacy and safety concerns. So, for example, I mean, this would be helpful, I imagine, in human trafficking cases as well, correct?
Oh, yes.
With all of the massage places we have on Toa Boulevard?
Yes.
So this could help in, you know, in catching the criminals running the organization. But what about the customers that visit those places? Is their privacy going to be?
So, so on the privacy side, really, we only access that information. It, it's, it's not accessible to just anybody to just look through. It has to be tied to a case. And I should mention too, as you talk about human trafficking, like, all the Amber Alert vehicles, all those are also in that system. So if they drive by those locations, we're able to act on that information as well.
What about erasing data on people who have not engaged in wrongdoing?
So right now, that's not the way, the way the system works. The, basically, the data that's collected sits in this database. We, we clear all the data out after five years. But as I mentioned, there's legislation coming that, that I believe is going to limit that more. There's already, it's already been proposed. It didn't happen this last year, but it, but it's coming. But that's what we do is as, after five years, we delete that data.
When you say limited more, you mean reducing the time that the data is stored?
Correct, correct, yes.
Yeah, because five years is a long time.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and then about the cost really quickly?
Yes.
It is, the city will pay $129,000 of the overall package?
Correct. So, and the reason is, some of the funds for this were already in other projects, already in the budget. For instance, we already had some trailers that were budgeted in, in there. The, the LPR systems for the patrol cars, there's one that was already budgeted in the previous budget cycle. Out of those four is already, already in the original budget. So that's, that's why you see that, is some of that stuff was already budgeted. We already have funds for it.
I see, thank you.
Councilmember Adam, was your hand up?
Thanks, Mayor. So the county will be chipping in then, in other words, to this project?
No, that's, that's the city funds that were already in, in this two-year city budget.
Oh, I thought I heard you say the county was going to get involved and we would be the beneficiaries of that, the city of Thousand Oaks, no?
No, well, the, what I was speaking to there, I think, is the sharing of the data where we share data with, with other counties as well as all across the county.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, that's beneficial in itself, yeah, okay. And, and just so the public knows, the only picture taken is of the license plate, right?
Correct. It's a, so the way it works is this, it's a picture of the, the front or rear of the car and the license plate. You can tell usually what make and model the car is, you can, and you can read the license plate.
No pictures of the occupants in the car?
No, there may be times when, incidentally, it may pick up pictures of, of occupants depending on what angles they're coming at, but they're not aimed at, at that location. As a matter of fact, at the times I've, so it's been a couple of years since I've used the system, but when I was using the system initially, I never saw a picture of, of a person. But it's not to say that that doesn't happen because it, it could incidentally happen, but I have not seen it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember McNamee.
Chief, I'd like to come back to a scenario and tell me if this is realistic. Red Mustang was involved with a snatch and grab at one of our retail stores. Leaving the parking lot, LPR picks up the license plate. They proceed towards the 101 freeway and get away. Patrol officers arrive, they look through the data, looking for specifically at 205 when it occurred for that red Mustang's license plate. No other vehicles are looking for, they're just looking for that one. And they find out through the LPR national system that this car hangs out in Camarillo. So now the detectives are able to go and actually apprehend that person and complete their investigation because it gave them clues to where this, this vehicle hangs out most of the time. Is that a, is that a reasonable scenario that could go down?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you an example actually here. We, we, with our South American theft groups, we identified a rental car that was being used, looked through the historical data and found it had been passed by our LPR reader at Westlake and Toa Boulevard on the night we had a residential burglary. And then also, we had read the apartment complex, I believe in the San Fernando Valley, which led our detectives down there that, then they have to do the actual surveillance, eyes-on surveillance work to figure out which apartment and who involved. And so, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember McNamee. Chief, I have a couple of questions. Like a lot, like a lot of things, there's good and bad to a lot of, a lot of these propositions that we look at. I can see that this might be, you know, automated. It would take a lot of hours out of a police officer's day to do the same thing that these license plate readers do. What is the difference then between, if you, if you had the manpower and, and the, the amount of money it would take to have a, an officer just sit there or have the license plate readers, there a difference in how they operate or, other than the fact one's automated, one is, is a human?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, these are all, it's, it's taking images of vehicles that are out in the public right away that, that, you know, they have no right to privacy of traveling out in the public. And if an officer was there writing down the license plate by hand, it'd be the, you know, the same thing. It's just an automated process this way.
Okay. And then I think this, if you can go a little bit into how this has been helpful to the sheriff's office and our, our police in apprehending people. In other words, is this a once-a-year type thing that we benefit from or is it something we benefit constantly?
Oh, yeah, this is a, this is a constant benefit. It's, it's a, you know, it's not, it's, it's one of the tools we use, but it's a very important tool. And, and it's, it's, it's every, I wouldn't say every case. Most cases that involve a vehicle, the LPR data is going to become a part of that investigation of us looking at that, looking at that data.
Very good. I, I suspected that. I did a little bit of research. I noticed that Mesa, Arizona, has some LPRs as well. In the year that they instituted it, it went from their, their stolen car apprehension was tripled.
Yes.
In that, in that year. So it's a good handy tool. Now, on the flip side, there's some serious privacy concerns that people have expressed in our emails. You mentioned that there is no expectation of privacy in, when you're out in the public. Once that data is collected though, can you go a little bit more into depth, how that data is, is protected against farming that data for, for information?
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor, I mean, Claudia, Claudia mentioned that, you know, if, if a customer at a massage parlor constantly is picked up on the, the license plate reader, how is that person protected from assumptions?
Yeah, so, so any use of that has to be tied to a criminal case. So they need to be investigating that massage parlor or that person in order to even gain access to that data. But there, you know, that, it's interesting you bring that up because when we do, you know, physical surveillance of massage parlor, we have, we have the same exact problems with license plate readers. It, it's no different. There's people that attend those that have no criminal intent at all and their license plates are still written down. They may even be run through a database to see who the person is and, and see what they're up to. Same thing happens at, at, you know, drug houses. I've done, you know, thousands of hours of surveill, narcotic surveillance on houses and write down plates and we run plates. And sometimes, you know, it's grandma picking up the kids to, to take them to nursery, but sometimes it's, you know, a customer, a drug customer. And so it's, that, that happens and that, that will happen with this. But it's limited to these investigations. It's, it's not, there's nobody that's, that can go through there and, and just look through the data to just fish for things. It, it's always attached to investigation.
I think that's a, a major concern of people who are concerned about their privacy, that this, this database, which is admittedly going to be a large number of, of data points, would be farmed for some other reason. You, you mentioned that the sheriff's department holds that data and does not share it?
Yeah, so I could talk about that a little bit. So in our policy 429, it specifically talks about the sharing of data. And if I can get to it, I can read it to you.
I have the old one here if you'd like.
Yeah, you have, you have the old one. I have the new one. So the Ventura County Sheriff's Office shares AL, and again, this is on our public website, venturasheriff.org. You can look this policy up by yourself, for yourself. The Ventura County Sheriff's Office shares ALPR data with other law enforcement agencies upon the execution of an inter-agency agreement by which each agency agrees that all ALPR data will be gathered, accessed, utilized, and disclosed in accordance with applicable law. Each agency by way of the agreement further commits to the following. ALPR data shall only be accessible to authorized users for legitimate purposes. Audits shall be conducted and maintained by each agency as defined by their department's policy. The Ventura County Sheriff's Office does not share ALPR data with commercial or private entities.
Okay. I noticed on it, it does, it does say it does share the, with prosecutors and others.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a-
Who are those others?
Yes, we could talk about that. Once, say we have a case and we, we find a vehicle involved with our case. So we'll use the South, the South American theft group that I was speaking with. That data, that, that license, that image of catching them go by the license plate reader, that then becomes evidence and is treated just like any other evidence and will be shared with the prosecution, will be shared with the defense. That's what that's speaking about.
Okay, and then the, the data then, you say it has to be connected with a case. Therefore, somebody would not be, should not be concerned if their license plate is picked up, say, an undocumented person going to work. And they always is going by a, a location.
Yeah, correct. There, there'd be no flag that would go along with that, right? So the, the flags that are in the system are, you know, stolen vehicles, vehicles associated with missing persons, you know, wanted persons, things like that.
And if somebody were to go to, say, Planned Parenthood or go to a church in the area, that type of information would not flag and be, be tracked then?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mayor Engler.
I believe we have one speaker. Is that right? Well, three speakers now, I'm sorry. I only have one on my screen here and I'd like to call David Ellis, please.
He's not on.
Not on? I'm only showing David as the only speaker we had?
We have Sean Maradian next.
Sean Maradian, please. Go ahead, please.
President of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, thank you. First of all, Mayor Engler, we wanted to congratulate you on becoming our mayor. On behalf of our board of directors and our members, we very much look forward to working with you and admire your lifelong career to public service. So thank you and we look forward to a good 2022. We'd like to thank Chief Paris for his presentation and the wonderful job him and his deputies and their special enforcement unit do to protect our small businesses and our patrons along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. In order to have a vibrant downtown, it needs to be safe and we need to make sure that we have an area that people feel that they can come and patronize with their families and know that, you know, that, that any type of crime will not be tolerated and mitigated to the fullest extent of the law. With that, I want to thank Councilmember McNamee, who approached our TOBA board with the suggestion of, you know, what does, what does our membership need? the suggestion of, you know, what does, what does our membership need for a safe environment? And we, we'd explored that at depths, and we participated at a workshop held at the Ventura County Sheriff's Office here. And this license plate reader program, I think, was one of the results of that outreach. Uh, we took that information to our board. Mr. McNamee did a lot of outreach to our group, uh, to our small businesses, and really pioneered this, and, and we're, we're very thankful, uh, that you did that. Our Board of Directors thought that there was immense value in partnering with the City of Thousand Oaks and showing support to our police department, and therefore, we like to pledge $25,000 of our funds towards this program, because we feel that our Boulevard and our namesake thoroughfare deserves to be, uh, you know, protected and safe and use any and all technology that's reasonably available to our law enforcement to that end. So, thank you, Mr. McNamee. Thank you, Chief Paris, and all of your deputies. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and with that, uh, our pledge stands. If this so moves forward, we will be happy to send over payment. Thank you very much, happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Ms. Maradian. Next up, we have, um, Matthew. Coming to the microphone. Good evening, Matthew.
Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Hofschmidt. I'm a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, been here for over four decades. In that time, seeing how the city has grown, population has grown, and the safety that the city has, has kept me in the area. And I've been honored to travel the world and always come back here feeling safe. Having personal experience with these LPRs, um, I've done ride-alongs with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And in that time, the first time I ever became aware of this was there was an alert that went off, I heard it, the deputy quickly checked, made, we were just in a parking lot, and was able to make an assessment very quickly to something that he didn't see. And it's not that he wasn't looking for it or was trying to look for it, but it alerted him to the moment that there was something to check out. And in that investigation, the deputy was very quick, like Chief Paris was describing, was able to, uh, basically attain it was no concern. And I address that to some of the, um, comments that you're getting from other constituents, is yes, there is a privacy concern, but we are in the digital age. We're in the time right now that you already have these LPRs, they're already on the, the cruisers, they're already in the city, they're around the state, they're already there. And that's the issue, is we are in the digital age. All you're trying to do is look at how to expand that and keep the city safe. On top of that, I've been witness to, not a smash and grab, but somebody stealing something from a store, and I tried, as a citizen, to help the police by getting the police, I'm sorry, the license plate. And in that situation, the car was too far away, and I couldn't get a readout on it. And that was information that I know is helpful to the sheriff's department, because that allows them to go through this whole process. So as a citizen, I wasn't able to, with my own eyes, capture that data. Whereas, what's being presented to you allows the deputies, the system, and even protecting the citizens from this type of crime that's happening. And that was a minor crime. Councilman McNamee and also Chief have been describing some more serious ones. So it goes to all the perspectives of it. And to really address the concerns to the citizens, personal privacy I do understand, and I do respect it, um, but there is safeguards in place. Um, I personally have spoken to deputies, I've looked into how the sheriff's department goes about keeping our personal privacy. And the steps that they have to go through, the qualifications they go through in that training, is so high, that I just want to, as another citizen, say to our citizens, I understand the concern, and I feel comfortable with it, from witnessing it. And the one thing I would suggest, if anyone has any questions of how the sheriff's department handles themselves, is do ride-alongs, participate with them, go in and talk with fellow deputies when they're out in patrol.
Thank you, Matthew, time's up.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
No problem.
Okay, any other, uh, public speakers? Not on my list? Very good. Further questions for staff? I've got, I've got one question for staff, and it has to do with the, the, um, proposal for, for these types of cameras at, at facilities, uh, that are not public facilities, in other words, the shopping centers and whatnot. What happens to that data? Is it just simply goes straight to the sheriff's department, or is it held by the private entities?
No, it's, it's only to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I'll close the, uh, public hearing and, um, leave it open for comment and, uh, motion.
I'd like the motion that we accept, uh, 10, 1 through 6, 10A, 1 through 6, and...
Thank you, Councilmember McNamee, any discussion? Councilmember Adam.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember McNamee for recognizing early on the value of these license plate readers, even before this wave of thefts that we seem to be going through now. You, you saw that value, and, uh, you're helping us make public safety our number one priority, always is. So thank you on that, Kevin. And also want to thank the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association for stepping up once again, being a great partner to the City of Thousand Oaks, from putting in three crosswalks in the city to, to ensure safety, from, um, striping parking all along the Boulevard, and now, uh, chipping in for these license plate readers. Uh, the Boulevard Association's done a lot to support our business community, a lot to make sure we're safe here in the city, so thank you for that. And, um, I will certainly support the motion, I think it's a great way to spend some money and, uh, make sure we're all, uh, safe.
Very good. Councilmember Builda Le Penya.
Yeah, I, I echo what, um, Councilmember Adam said, so that was really very, a good idea to have the workshop and get started on this. And I look forward to the, to the fruits of this partnership and see how well it works, and hopefully we'll catch more criminals. Thank you.
And, and from me, I think, uh, like, like I started off, there's always, there's always a double-edged sword. I think the value of this outweighs the privacy concerns that are legitimate concerns from our, our, our members. Chief, you, I think you've allayed any of my concerns with the safeguards that are in place for our sheriff's department. Once again, our sheriff's department, I think, is a leader in a lot of these things, and, um, I, uh, you've answered my concerns, thank you.
The genesis of this program, 10A and the license plate readers, started with a concerned citizen who cared enough about the city by writing a letter to the local newspaper who pointed out that as she was sitting in the parking lot at Jan's and Moore Park, she observed a drug deal go down. So outraged, she wrote a letter that I read, and made a phone call the next day to Chief. Chief Paris says, yes, we'll have a meeting next week, and we discussed the possibilities of increasing public safety. Without public safety, anarchy persists. So we talked about different options and choices. I was part of the West Valley LAPD, uh, boosters that put in license plate readers and, uh, cameras there in the West Valley, which was a force multiplier. We had benefit to that, and I thought, why not bring this to the City of Thousand Oaks? Ricky Gelb, who was one of the board members and myself, we worked about eight years to get it on board, and I have to say, the four or five months that Chief Paris worked on this was like grease lightning. Thank you, Chief Paris, for expediting this. We met with, uh, the Manhattan Police Department, uh, Councilmember there, Richard Montgomery, was a contact. They've had tremendous success with license plate readers and went through a long list of criminals they were able to take off the street that normally would have bypassed and been working in their own community. Captain, uh, Dan Cook and I drove down there, had a wonderful meeting, saw how they did their program, brought that information back, saw that we also had that capacity and the vision that could occur. Met with the business owners up and down the Boulevard in Thousand Oaks, as well as, uh, Moore Park and other business centers, and I became very alarmed. I found out that there's actually more crime out there than the police know. As I was inviting these business owners, managers, and assistant managers to this meeting to interest them in making license plate readers part of their ingress and egress into their parking lots, making Thousand Oaks more secure, I talked to the manager at Marshalls, who tells me that not daily, I'm sorry, not weekly, but daily, there are snatch and grabs that are occurring in their store, where people will pull up, run into the store, grab merchandise, run back into the car and drive off. I talked to the manager at Old Navy and the Jan's Mall. They talked about the Jeddah gang, and I says, what's the Jeddah gang? They says, it's a blue Jeddah that pulls up, four people get out, run into the Old Navy store, grab merchandise, jump in their car and leave. I talked to Vaughn's Market at Jan's and Moore Park and find out that they frequently are hitting their liquor store, where people run in, grab the liquor, jump back in the car and leave. And I asked them, do you report this to the police? They say, why? We go through a lot of paperwork and nothing happens, because the way the laws are written with Prop 4757, AB 109, and no bail. And I understand that. But we and our businesses, if we continue to have these merchandise losses, that's passed on to our consumers, our residents, in higher product costs. And it reaches a point where these stores will close, because they can't make profit to pay their bills, their employees, their rents. Now we've got stores closing, blight begins to happen, people are unemployed, city doesn't get revenue in order to run the services we provide, like filling potholes and keeping streetlights on. And I identified this as a big problem, because if I'm reading about this in the local newspaper, I know from my law enforcement background, it's more prevalent. And in fact, I spoke to the woman who's the regional manager of Starbucks about how things were going and had they been impacted. Can't see people running doing snatch and grab on Starbucks coffee, but you never know. But she shared with me that she knows that drug dealing was going on at Jan's and Moore Park for some four years that she's been the regional manager. They refer to it as the tar pit. Tar pit meaning heroin sales. I do not and will not tolerate drug sales in my city. I take this very personally. License plate readers go a long way to stop, stop drug dealing. I do not want them in our city, because drugs steals the hearts and minds of the individual, no longer do they have purpose in life, but now they're addicted to the drug, and that is what's dictating their behavior, not why God put them here on this earth. So I look for license plate readers to be a solution that has a balance between privacy, because the procedures that are in place, we only get the license plate and only look for it when there's a crime involved with that particular looking vehicle. Data's kept for a short time, and then erased. But yet, the public safety benefit far exceeds, and has been very critical already in our city, as the chief has illustrated, with the Chilean gangs that has hit North Ranch like crazy. Catching people who have done, in stolen vehicles, or an attempted rape that happened in one of our parks, that the DNA matched to other rapes that did occur here in Thousand Oaks and solve those problems. Close those cases. So, yes, I, I could see it coming from my background, and I'd like to think that my skillset to the DIAs here and to the council was part of that. I thank Captain Dan Cook, Chief Paris. We have Sergeant Dylan Alvarez. Manhattan Beach Councilmember, Richard Montgomery, their captain, Christian, and I can never pronounce his last name correctly, for allowing us to see what they do. I look forward to this council perhaps providing more funding in the future years as funding comes available, because we have not locked down the city completely. We've gone, made a big step here. I've also reached out to the cities of Agora, Westlake, and Moore Park, to their mayors and their council members, to interest them in adding that license plate readers. So we, as a Ventura County community, with our neighbors of Agora, Westlake, and Moore Park, can keep the criminals out. When the manager at Marshalls tells me that she knows the people who are coming in to steal the merchandise are coming in from her neighborhood in Canoga Park, they're coming in from outside our city. And I would like to protect our city, our residents, and make it a safe place that we've always known it to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor, uh, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Builda Le Penya.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee.
Yes.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Protem Jones absent.
Thank you all. Very good, that's the last item of, of, uh, on our agenda, with the exception of, uh, our city manager and comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on Tuesday, January 11th. Our agenda is still shaping up for that meeting. At the moment, we currently have two department reports, including a six-month report from TO Arts, as well as a department report from Public Works on capital improvements, um, at Lawrence and Teller Intersection. We may have an update on Project Home Key, depending on how things progress over the coming weeks. And that concludes my remarks. Happy holidays to the city council, residents, businesses, and community members of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. And, um, I would echo that, very happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody, uh, in the city. Take, take a moment, buy local, and we will see you back here on January 11th.